Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Corman, Ms. Witchy?
Present.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. McIrvin?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the A. Mr. Corman be excused.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni that Council excuse Councilmember Corman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. First item on the agenda is a proclamation.
Okay, this proclamation is regarding National Mentoring Month. Whereas our success as a community depends on helping every child succeed in school and reach their full potential in life, and we realize that young people need a solid foundation of support to help them become well-educated, confident, and productive citizens. And whereas communities and schools is the only dropout prevention program in the nation proven to increase graduation rates. And this research shows that mentoring has beneficial and long-term effects on youth by increasing their chances of high school graduation and college attendance and decreasing the likelihood of substance abuse and other risky behaviors. And whereas thousands of Renton's childrens are in need of a caring adult mentor in their lives, and closing this mentoring gap will require more investment, partnerships, and volunteers ready to make a difference in a child's life. And whereas National Mentoring Month is an opportunity to raise public awareness of the importance of mentoring, recognizing the dedicated individuals who serve as mentors, and encouraging more citizens to help build a brighter future for Renton's youth through mentoring. And whereas the mission of communities and schools of Renton is to surround students with a community of support empowering them to stay in school and achieve in life. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim January 2016 to be National Mentoring Month in the City of Renton in tribute to the many dedicated individuals who volunteer their time, compassion, and talents to mentor young people. And I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance and to consider giving back to our community as mentors. In witness whereof, I have hereon too set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 11th day of January 2016, and is signed by Mayor Dennis Law.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Pavoni that this proclamation be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. So I think Sue and Mara, we've got a proclamation for you, and you're certainly welcome to say a few words.
What surprised me was how powerful it was. A lot of my career before I became a principal was to help manage kids that were struggling in school and coming up with intervention programs, and this far exceeded anything I'd seen. It's pretty amazing the impact that it has. It's very, very powerful.
How much you've actually made an impact on that kid, I really wouldn't think that the kids would remember me. If I bumped into somebody like in high school, if I'm at the high school, they'll remember me as being their mentor six years ago. So it's really uplifting feeling.
So the mentors come for one hour a week throughout the school year. And it's always, it's fun to watch it unfold because the mentors sign up because they want to help a life. They want to save a child's life, they want to enrich it. The mentor gets more out of the program, it almost seems, than the child, than the student.
Just the satisfaction that I got from day to day in terms of the work that I was doing. And I've held many jobs, and this job was one that wasn't, the perks weren't monetary or status or prestige. I just remember thinking to myself after, you know, after leaving work, how enjoyable and how wonderful it felt to do what I was doing on a daily basis.
What was really powerful to me is the smile that he gives when I show up. That's what I really enjoyed seeing. And that lets me know that, hey, he wants me here, or he wants to, he likes, enjoys working with me and talking with me.
We need more. There are so many kids that would benefit from this. It just breaks your heart to sometimes see these kids in the schools and say, I can't provide you with that. We don't have enough services, we don't have the funds, and we don't have enough mentors. And there are just so many kids that have this need that we're not able to reach just because of limited capacity, that that's the one thing that we could just use more of.
Thank you. I got really excited about my video, and I forgot to say thank you so much for the proclamation. Thank you, Mayor Law, thank you, Council. We really appreciate that.
You bet. Thank you.
So I hope you enjoyed the video. We're very excited about that. That was done by David Palmer, and we thank him very much for creating that video for us. National Mentoring Month is important because mentoring is a huge part of what communities and schools does in our community, and we are just thankful that the City of Renton chooses to acknowledge National Mentoring Month. I just want to say a couple of things about our mentor program. We are, we have about 100 mentors working in the Renton School District right now, and I want to especially thank Councilmember Pavoni, who has volunteered to become a mentor. We're excited to get him started, and thank you for volunteering.
Well, thank you.
We are always in need of more mentors, and right now, we are pretty excited because we've put out the call for the last couple of years, not only at the City Council meeting, but we've been at Renton River Days and at the parade. And what we're really seeing is people starting to answer that call from communities that we haven't served before, and we haven't gotten volunteers from before. So we're really excited about the diversity of our new volunteer mentors, the different age ranges we are starting to see coming from this community. Mentoring, we just need people for an hour a week, once a week. It's a very, very low type commitment for a really huge reward. So I really encourage people who are watching this and community members to become a volunteer mentor. You can find out more at our website. You can just Google Communities and Schools of Renton. And you can call me. My phone number is 425-430-6659, and I will talk to you about it. I also happen to have applications here today, so if anyone is moved, I can get you signed up right now. So thank you so much for your time. Thank you for your support. We really appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you for being here tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
Yeah, so I actually haven't been a mentor yet, but I have a little bit of experience with that. My wife was a mentor for a number of years, and she really didn't think that she was making a large impact in the beginning because her girl was extremely shy. And what was quite interesting is after her mentoring was over, her little girl continued to update her on her grades, and she ended up graduating with honors. And even to this day, big events in her life, she still sends and forwards the information to my wife, and it's quite nice to see the fruits of the labor. So I'm excited to, I'm looking forward to it. So thank you.
That's great.
And I do have a mentor who's here to speak. He can wait until audience time, or perhaps he could do it?
Well, he can, right now, be just fine.
Right, okay. So I'd like to introduce Chris Chrome.
Hi, guys. Thank you for allowing me to come here and talk on behalf of the Communities and Schools of Renton. I've been a mentor for two years now. I think it's a great program. Kristi Merrill and Mara are the people that really got me to consider this, and I really grew a connection with the kid, Jerry, that I'm mentoring. He came up with a really, he just was dealt a bad hand in life, you know, and it's really unfortunate. And, you know, I kind of grew up, not as worse as he did, but in similar situation where a positive influence in life is very helpful. And luckily, I had my grandparents living right next door to me, so I had that outlet. But a lot of these kids that are just, you know, in that position, they need a positive influence. One hour a week, you know, that's not very much. I think it's a great program. I want to do more, you know, and I think if we're able to get more mentors or men member, we need men, right, more men to come out and try to be that positive influence for the kids that don't have a positive male influence in their life, I think that would be very helpful. So is there anything else? Yeah, be a mentor, guys. I'm telling you, worth it.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Mr. Mayor, Council, just a couple of brief items, mostly for public's information. Just a reminder, as we continue to have cold weather during snow and ice events, sanders and snow plows are dispatched to keep our major arterials drivable. De-icer is applied to major arterials as needed if weather conditions permit. So be careful not to park or abandon your vehicle within any portion of the traffic lanes. That does create problems for us, and we will move your cars. We've got, this is the last time, just a reminder again for the public, if they have any questions. Next week, on the 20th, we're going to be removing two trees at Liberty Park. They were removing them because they were through some damage in the tree themselves. They're considered now to be a safety hazard, so we're going to have to remove them. And we often get calls when some of these old stately trees are having to be taken down, but that's the reason. Continue to have a couple of construction projects that'll impact traffic. Obviously, Main Avenue continues to be one that will be impacted for quite a while, and so we just encourage people to drive slowly through there. It's a pretty rough street right now, as they are now in the process of working on some sewer lines and utilities. 55th Street and Talbot, we're installing, or power poles are being installed, and so that also will require some periodic closures. And then finally, Logan Avenue continues to be closed through August, so people just need to be aware of that as they travel. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Covington. Next item is audience comment. I have a couple of people here signed up to address the council. When I call your name, please come to the podium, give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes. We have a timer next to the city clerk. Dan Koch, first. I hope I pronounced your name properly. Okay.
Mayor Law, council members, good evening. My name is Dan Koch, K-O-C-H, and I'm the Director of Electric Operations at Puget Sound Energy, located at 10885 Northeast 4th in Bellevue. PSC and the City of Renton have enjoyed a strong partnership-
What surprised me was how powerful it was. A lot of my career before I became a principal was to help manage kids that were struggling in school and coming up-
Sorry about that.
That's okay. There we go. So, excuse me. PSC and the City of Renton have enjoyed a strong partnership regarding infrastructure needs for many decades, and we certainly appreciate that. In light of that, I'm here tonight to provide you a recap of the Energize East Side project and talk briefly about what is still to come. You may recall about this time last year, we were just wrapping up our community advisory group process in which two primary routes for a new transmission line were recommended. Not surprisingly, the community advisory group recommended and agreed with proponents nationwide that the best place to locate transmission infrastructure is where transmission infrastructure already exists. So the two recommended routes follow much of the existing corridor that PSC purchased back in the 1930s. However, a final route has not been selected, which will be an outcome of the environmental review process that is ongoing. What is known is that the need for this infrastructure project is real. After 50 years of unmitigated growth on the east side, our existing 115 KV transmission lines, which serve the greater east side, are strained and need more capacity. Five studies, three of which were publicly funded, independently verified this need. In fact, when we updated our analysis last year, it showed that the east side has a transmission deficiency earlier than previously thought, starting in the summer of 2018. So the need for this project is very real, and it is imperative that we do not delay or risk not meeting federally mandated reliability standards. In preparing for the EIS process, PSC also looked at many alternatives to solve the problem, some of which have been recommended by the public. Battery technology, local generation, our solutions report, which was also updated last year, analyzed in detail why these alternatives do not solve the problem. At the same time, we were busy conducting fieldwork, which will be used to inform our designs in preparation for Phase 2 of the EIS process, which is where different solutions and alternatives will be studied. We fully expect the EIS process, which will conclude late 2016, to analyze the impacts of any routes that are proposed, and that it will also offer ideas on how to mitigate the impacts. We are very intent on working with the City of Renton, along with the other jurisdictional cities on the east side, and the communities to build this project, a project that is vitally needed to maintain electric reliability for the east side. Our sole motivation is to keep the lights on, and we take this responsibility very seriously. As the EIS process unfolds, you may have questions, and we are happy to work with you and your staff to answer them and to discuss further the project either one-on-one or as a full council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dan. Next is Lindsay Dedrick. I hope I pronounced your name properly. Was I close?
Very close.
Okay.
Thank you all very much for your time. This is my first time at the City Council, and I was coming to address something that I've really become aware of, what's actually going on at these places, is the Cowgirls Espresso, which is on Park Avenue North. And I'm sure some of you are familiar with these bikini baristas, because there was some of the baristas, sorry, I'm a little nervous.
That's okay.
But some of these coffee shops were already shut down this year because they were doing illegal activity, but it appears that there's still one still open in the Renton area. And it appears, from what I can tell from ordinance number 5597 in the City of Renton, that it's still breaking some laws. So I looked into it, and the ones that I can find is that there appears to be laws related to the hours of operation, the distance to, between that location and bars and schools. And so, from Google Maps, it says that this Cowgirls Espresso is within 279 feet of one bar, 367 to another, and 371 to another bar. And actually, right behind this coffee shop is Education Center, which is a public high, or a private high school. Called the Torrey Education Center. And I'm not exactly sure, because it doesn't specify the hours of operation regulations, but it is open at 4:30 a.m., and according to other states, that time would be too early because you can't be open between like 12 a.m. and 8 a.m. So the reason like why this matters is because having a coffee stand where women are wearing hardly anything, you know, thongs, maybe they're not even wearing a top or barely covered on top, and they're reaching outside of the coffee shop to serve drinks, that means that anyone walking by can be seeing this. And according to some of these regulations, obviously, the idea is that anyone who's not in the facility, so when they go to strip clubs, they know what they're signing up for, they just walked into them. But people on the street didn't sign up to see a woman wearing nothing hanging out of a window. And so, young people can be walking by at any time, they're not 18, as you would have to be to enter into some of these other locations. And what was also a little concerning is that when I looked on the website for Cowgirls Espresso, there's no minimum age to even apply for a job, which means that any one of your daughters who's 16 years old and has the right to work could go work in one of these places. And we know what kinds of things can be happening. It's not always just looking, sometimes there's touching. And so, that's really concerning because that, you know, puts children at risk as well, or young people at risk. And so, I just was calling around today, asking, what do I do as a concerned citizen? This really bothers me. Like, I don't like walking by that and seeing that. And I know that the law, as much as we have freedom of speech, we also have laws to protect people who don't want to be exposed to that material. We live in a hyper-sexualized culture where it's everywhere, but you know, some parents, some families don't want their children walking down the street and seeing a woman that's, I would say half naked, but it's more than half. There's really nothing on there. You can go on Twitter, I looked at some of the photos on Twitter of the outfits these girls are wearing, and they're hardly even outfits. And so, I believe our laws are also meant to protect us from not being exposed to those kind of things involuntarily. And so, that's why I've come here. I don't know if you answer questions, but, no, you don't. Okay.
Just because we don't have the opportunity to really research what you're saying, but go ahead and finish, and then I'll give you some advice here.
So I was wondering, what do I do? Do I get people to sign a petition? Do I just show you and go take pictures and measure the distance between this coffee shop and a bar, because that's what it says in the ordinance? So that's, I kind of really came with a question of what to do next, because I really think that this is an important issue, because it can be putting young girls at risk who are signing up thinking, oh, this is great, I make so much money. You know, you read these reviews on Yelp, and they're offering, like, I'll show you more for $20, and they can make thousands of dollars a month. So that puts these young girls at risk, but it also puts young boys at risk who don't want to see this stuff and who, you know, there are some that still want to live a pure life today and are trying not to be exposed to all these things, but don't have the choice when they're hanging out the window of a coffee shop. So I just want to know what to do.
Okay, well, appreciate you coming down. The thing I'm going to suggest that you do, at least to start off with-
Yeah.
Chip Vincent is in the back of the room. He'll wave his hand so you can see him. If you could get in touch with him and give him your phone number, he can research the code and some of the things that you're concerned with and get back with you in terms of whether or not there's any violation of any of our city ordinances. And clearly, if you ever see anything that's illegal, you know, which is not easy, but anything that would be illegal, certainly, you know, nudity, or if you were aware of other activity taking place, the police department would address that. So, but the first thing I think would be to have Chip and his staff look at the ordinances that you're referring to and get back to you on exactly what that is. Clearly, if they're in violation of any of our ordinances or codes, we'll address that.
Okay. So I don't know if you, along that lines, since we're all mature adults here, so public nudity is illegal, correct? So is, if you're in a car and you're masturbating, is that illegal? Is that public indecency?
If you were caught doing that, yes, I believe that would be-
Public indecency, okay.
Illegal.
So if there was record of that, or even video footage of that, that would show that-
Well, what somebody's doing in their car versus what the employees of the coffee place are doing are two different things. So, but again, you know-
But he would be able to know what's-
Well, he'll be able to help you with the code issues of that, and then, you know, we have a police officer in the back who can answer maybe just some, some of the questions you just, you just asked, but we would have to look at the offense and be able to address that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We have four items for a council consideration. Are there any items a council member would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, we've got-
Oh, I'm sorry. You weren't signed up.
I'm sorry, I wasn't signed up. I got here just a little bit too late to sign up.
Okay.
But I'd like to speak if I could.
Give your name and city of residence for the record, and you have five minutes.
My name is Victor Bishop, and I live in Bellevue, Washington, and I've got copies of my testimony here, and I'll give you the- And there's copies there that could be distributed if you wanted to. So, Mayor Law and council members, again, my name is Vic Bishop, and I'm here to talk to you about Sound Transit. And on December 7th, and I'm here as a, speaking on behalf of the East Side Transportation Association, and I'm its chair-elect and a board member. On December 7th, 2007, Sound Transit sent a letter to all the cities in their taxing district, including the City of Renton, and asking for you to put input, thanking you for your input to date, and asking you for comments and acknowledgement of their scope elements included in the candidate project reports of interest to you, and note if there are scope elements that have been overlooked or included unnecessarily. But I believe you received that letter, you're probably in the process of replying, and they've requested that you reply by January 21st. So you had a whole 45 days to respond to this request over the Christmas and holiday period when most councils are, take some time off, and you elect a new mayor and do what you did last week about a new council. First of all, I'm just asking if you think that's a fair process to only have 45 days to make this response to a major, major issue that is going to be on the ballot in December of this year.
Well, based on what I know, we've been having discussions about this for years, not just 45 days.
I know, I know.
And as far as I understand, the letter's requesting anything new to add to what Sound Transit already understands our position to be, to please let them know by January 21st.
Right.
Did I characterize that correctly? Okay.
Yeah, right. So I'm here to ask you to think about the tone of the letter that you've written, presumably. I don't know if you've already sent your letter off, but the two concepts that I want to ask you to include in your letter is, one, is the whole concept of subarea equity. Subarea equity is something that was promised and a part of the 1996 Sound Transit ballot issue. It was carried on into Sound Transit 2, and we understand that Sound Transit has a thought in mind of changing the rules about subarea equity in the ballot issue for Sound Transit 3, a ballot issue this fall. And I'm standing here asking you to mention that subject in your letter, so that your position as to whether or not subarea equity is important to the City of Renton or not. And presumably, as it is in Bellevue, subarea equity is an incredibly important piece of the puzzle, and to have the taxes that are collected in the various subareas be spent in the subareas and do that in a fairly rigorous way. And the second major issue has to do with the cost to your constituents for the Sound Transit taxes and what you're getting for, as benefits from Sound Transit. And to that cost issue, the city manager, Kirk Triplet, of the City of Kirkland, says in his community that the Sound Transit taxes will double if Sound Transit 3 passes. And deputy, former Deputy Mayor Kevin Wallace says that the total Sound Transit taxes will be $1,000 per average household per year in the region if Sound Transit 3 is approved. And the math that backs that up seems to be quite straightforward. So my question to you is, have you asked yourselves, or asked Sound Transit, what is the cost to your constituents per household? And is it in the $1,000 per household range in the long run for the next 30 years? And what is it that you're getting out of it? And so I would ask you to ask Sound Transit to show me how much tax revenue the City of Renton residents have paid in the last 19 years, since 1996 to current. And what have we got for that amount of money? And how much are we going to pay in the future per year after the half a cent, half a cent sales tax, the eight tenths of a percent motor vehicle excise tax, and the 25 cents per thousand property tax? If that were to pass, what would that really show up? Is it in the $1,000 range? And what are you going to get out of that?
I'm sorry, you're-
Is my five minutes up? Okay, well, thank you very much, and I appreciate it, and I appreciate your thinking about some of those thoughts to go into that letter to Sound Transit. And what's the tone that you'd like to have presented to them?
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. We have four items for council consideration. Are there any items a council member would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Pavoni.
I move the council approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Pavoni, seconded by Mr. Prince, that council concur with the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Ms. Witchy.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee has a Finance Committee report, and I just, I wish the Puget Power guy was here, because included in this voucher run is a bill from Puget Power for electricity, for our streetlights and everything. And it was for one month, $155,000, $155,056.61. And just to show the public some of the other major expenses have, it cost us $344,859 to house prisoners for a month. With that, I move the council concurring the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
Well, I think, first of all, we need to read the Finance Committee report. You guys are eager, but-
That is the follow procedure?
This is the vouchers committee report. The Finance Committee approves for payment on January 11th, 2016, claims vouchers 343471 through 344258, nine wire transfers, and two payroll runs with benefit withholding payments totaling- payments totaling $10,421,886.55. And payroll vouchers, including 1,506 direct deposits and 96 payroll checks totaling $3,385,444.29. And this is signed by the chair and members.
Mr. Mayor, now-
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the committee report be approved as read.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
So, the next Finance Committee report is regarding the 2015 Regional Aerials Funding Agreement. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the interlocal cooperative agreement to purchase regional aerial photographs captured in March 2015 with King County and regional partners for an amount not to exceed $16,000. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement and approve the associated resolution. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. McIrvin.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to resolutions and ordinances, we have one resolution this evening.
A resolution of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with King County, local governmental entities, and private cooperations entitled 2015 Regional Aerials Funding Agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Perez.
I move this resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Perez, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that this resolution be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, moving on to new business, Ms. Witchy.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee will meet on January 25th, 2016, at 4:30 p.m. in the- Oh. In, I'm sorry about that. Anyway, we'll meet in the council conference room with three issues, vouchers, sewer connection, back charge, waiver requests, and emerging issues in revenue streams, and that's it.
Okay. I'll go back to Ms. Witchy. I guess there's a canceled meeting?
Yes, the Community Services Committee meeting is canceled for next week. I'm not sure when it was supposed to take place, but we will be putting one on the agenda very soon.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Development Committee meeting regularly scheduled for January 14, 2016 is canceled.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Next week, we will be observing Martin Luther King Day, so we will have no council and no meeting. And the meeting scheduled for January 12th, or January 25th, for public safety will be canceled, and I'll be announcing for council president, on January 25th at 5:30, the committee the whole will be meeting in the conference center, and we have two issues, Sunset Area Redevelopment, Lakecomer Agreement, and Economic Development Update. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Perez.
No new business, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
And Mr. McIrvin.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Audience comment? Anybody that wants to address the council?
Move we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, seconded by Mr. Pavoni, that we adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.